I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland.
Hey, Black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, this difference between Black Star Network and black owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black owned media and be skating.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Today is Monday, September 26, 2022. Coming up on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network, two Georgia older persons, boy, they get into a heated exchange of words, a white man and a sister. The white man is accused of calling the black older woman a ghetto bitch. Yeah, we'll talk to the older woman about their acrimonious history. In Indianapolis, the Circle City Classic took place this weekend, but there was no football game. But that was a Circle City Classic. We'll tell you how dwindling crowds has led them to cancel the game, but continue the other festivities. We'll talk with all script host Scotty about what's happening with these classics and how they may be going out of style. Brett Favre, Sirius XM radio show gets suspended because of his involvement in Mississippi's welfare fraud investigation. Eight million dollars being sent to his areas of choice. Also, I was in North Carolina on Saturday for the announcement of a major initiative by the Environmental Protection Agency. Did you know that the environmental justice movement actually was launched in North Carolina 40 years ago? We'll tell you about what black residents there and some whites did to stop the environmental racism happening in their town, literally laying down in the streets to keep the trucks from bringing in hazardous material. It is a stunning story. We'll hear from EPA Administrator Michael Regan, also Reverend Dr. William J. Barber, Ben Chavis, and others. Also, in today's Fit, Live, Win segment. Now, many of you may hate working out. You may see it as a task. Well, my guest, fitness coach Avery Woodley says, "We must change our mindset as to how we approach working out and see it not as a chore, but really as an opportunity to free our minds and get ourselves in shape." And shape, plus we'll take your phone calls as well with regards to that. So look forward to asking her. So get your questions ready. It's time to bring the funk on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network. Let's go. All right, folks, in Savannah, Georgia, a black older woman accuses a white city council alderman of calling her a ghetto black bitch on video. There was an altercation that took place after a recent city council meeting, and it was captured by body cam footage from a police officer. Watch this.
She treats some police like shit all the time. Chick, ugh.
All we had was a shit dog.
I guess that makes you more than just peaceful, like.
Yeah, ask him. Ask him. Ask him. Did you get that on your body cam? Him calling me a ghetto bitch? Did you get that? Yeah. He called me a ghetto bitch. Yes. One of y'all got to say your body cam. I'm sure you did. Billy, you know what? You were just really... I feel sorry for you. It's a real disappointment, a real disappointment, and I hate that things have resulted to what they are. I really do.
Now, Alderman Curtis Purdy isn't heard on the police body cam calling the older woman names, but he admitted to calling her that in a phone interview. Now, prior to what took place outside the chamber, things got a little testy on the inside. Watch.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. Is there a motion regarding this license?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson, I move that we approve second.
And properly moving second that we approve this license. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Can we go to the board?
We sure can.
And so... I need to introduce that into the record.
No, no, the hearing has been closed, ma'am. All right, all in favor by approving this license, indicate by saying aye.
I'm trying to, um... Wow. Wow. That's sad. Talk about racial equity.
Motion...
Not at all.
fails.
There's your rec... Racial Equity, City Manager.
What does race have anything to do with it?
A whole lot.
I don't see it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, ladies and gentlemen.
Why is that?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Shut up, Keisha.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Move for a five-minute recess, please.
No, ma'am. No, sir. We're gonna move on. We're going to move forward. All right, um, we will now move to, um...
So you just told me to shut up, Purdy?
No.
Mr. Mayor, she could address the comment to you, not to me.
Mayor Johnson, I want to know if Mr. Purdy, did you just tell me to shut up?
Um, I'm not gonna...
All right, joining us right now is Savannah, Georgia, older woman Keisha Gibson Carter. So what is going on here? Has this been a contentious battle between y'all for months, years? What's going on?
I'm in a contentious battle for the citizens of Savannah. With regard to the interpersonal relations or the lack thereof, I really try not to focus too terribly much on that. Nonetheless, to make this really short and sweet, there's a rule of our council that essentially ices out the minorities on council, and by minority, I mean those who are in the minority vote by number. Myself, older woman Bryant Lanier, and Miller Blakely are three older persons who essentially are the most vocal, the most progressive and aggressive older persons, and the most accessible to the citizens of Savannah. But because we have a rule of council that says we cannot put forth an item for consideration as legislation for consideration unless we have a majority vote. So no place else in the whole United States of America does a sitting older person, notwithstanding that I am the number two vote getter on council. I actually got more votes than the mayor. I represent all of Savannah in an at-large post, and I cannot present an item for, to be considered. So fast forward two and a half years later, you can imagine that that's caused a lot of frustration. Nonetheless, we have figured a way to backdoor our way into getting what the citizens need, and that is helping them understand the importance of mobilization, forming a collective voice, and citizen engagement. And as a result of that, we are able to, in tandem, match that with our force on council and in the community, and get the attention of the people, and put others on council who were interested in supporting these efforts that ultimately support our community when it comes to crime, poverty, homelessness, and forced displacement. So we face pushback, and that pushback comes in the form of political hits that's often carried out by mainstream media here in Savannah, both print and television, as well as public assassination of our character, sullying our reputation, if you will. You see, Curtis Purdy has told me to shut up, and he has called me a ghetto bitch, a black ghetto bitch, that is. And so there is nothing, if you were to Google him, that comes up. But when you Google Keisha Gibson Carter, the media has done a pretty good job highlighting and sensationalizing minutia on council. This Curtis Purdy, this individual, has filed a bogus ethics complaint. I was shepherded through a process where I was humiliated, and we waste thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. We waste precious staff time only to have Curtis Purdy come to me a week later and apologize and say he was encouraged to file the ethics complaint, and he subsequently apologized. Well, we continued. We stayed on the wall. We did not give up. We continue to advocate for the citizens of Savannah, only to now find myself in a firestorm where I'm accused of calling, just by the sheer fact that I said the word racist or told a colleague that his behavior and rhetoric was racist on council, I was voted out of council chair. And physically, the mayor moved my seat physically. And so, you know, these are only, these are things that people said that I said. Nothing was captured with regard to the ethics complaint where it was stated that I cursed people out and I hit somebody with my pocketbook. It's the most ridiculous accounts of behavior that can be matched with public government. Nonetheless, we rose above it, and we are still in position, doing what we do every day, doing what I've done for this city now for nearly 30 years, and that is advocating for her, inspiring her, and protecting the citizens of Savannah from my place of this elected office. And so now we continue to be concerned because, you know, this is dangerous political warfare. I knew what I was signing up for. I'm signing up to run for the top job of the city of Savannah. I will be the 68th mayor of Savannah. And if I intend to occupy that post, surely I have to be able to take somebody calling me a ghetto bitch, and I have to be able to accept that someone would say, "Shut up," to me, notwithstanding it's a live city council meeting. But what I'm here to do is what others who are watching cannot do for themselves. There are women in this country, there are girls in this country whose bodies are under threat, and our voices daily are under threat and attacked. And I cannot sit idly by, despite the fact that these egregious acts happened some months ago, about four, four weeks for one and about two weeks for the other, and I tried to ignore it. But this individual, Curtis Purdy, posted on Facebook and bragged about what he did. But more dangerous than him bragging about what he did, Curtis Purdy is a sworn police officer, charged with protecting the citizens of the community where he works. He's a university professor at Georgia Southern University here in Savannah at the Armstrong Campus. Curtis Purdy is supposed to mitigate and de-escalate situations. This individual came out of his way. I left the city council meeting about eight to 10 minutes early to go out and meet with my citizen and to help mitigate the situation that she was in with our assistant city manager, Heath Lloyd, only to have Curtis Purdy come out of chambers and as opposed to taking the northern exit. He came in the southern direction where I was, where the assistant city manager, and where the citizen was. She, right away, stated that she did not want to speak with him, and I turned to him and said, "She doesn't want to speak to you? I have it. You've ignored her. Go on." So first and foremost, he never should have entered my space. He never should have entered my space, and secondly, he should...
So I'm confused by, I'm confused by, okay, where's the mayor? Where's the city council? When it comes to... Don't y'all have some sort of rules with conduct when it comes to how council members talk to each other?
Yes, we do, and...
So what happened?
Nothing. He has not been reprimanded. He has not been centered. The mayor has not acknowledged one word about his behavior. He's not expressed any concern. In fact, he announced on his show, on his live Facebook show, that he supported Curtis Purdy. And that, here again, is another reason why I'm speaking up and speaking out, because, as I stated...
So this is, I mean, it's just strange to me, again, like I say, I've seen other city councils where they've done some stuff, but this is quite, quite strange to me here. Hold tight one second. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to a break.
Always said this, rather than to continue to fight for a fair piece of the pie and an equal slice of the pie, I want my hand on a knife that cuts the pie. And to that extent, who bakes the pie and who puts it in? And that's one of the things that got me involved in going into politics in the first instance. I'm tired of people making decisions for me.
Right.
And mine. I want to be a part of that decision-making process. And luckily, it has paid off in terms of seeing the progress that many people in America have made, particularly people of color. One thing bothers me now that we seem to be losing that.
Right.
By saying that we've got to be more concerned with other people than those people who are here. We built America.
My name is Charlie Wilson.
Hi, I'm Sally Richardson Whitfield.
And I'm Dodger Whitfield.
Hey, everybody, this is your man Fred Hammond, and you're watching Roland Martin, my man, Unfiltered.
All right, so Alderman, older woman Keisha Gibson Carter, so, okay, so you don't have any admonishment from, from, from the council, from the mayor? What are your fellow members of city council saying? Are they just ignoring this?
Well, older woman Blakely, Miller Blakely, my post-two colleague, and older woman Bryant Lanier, the representative for District One, have been very, very supportive and have encouraged me to push for an Internal Affairs investigation because, as you see, most of the body cam footage is of me, and you hear me, but you don't hear Curtis Purdy when the police officer was standing right next to him. Now, you should know that the police officer is a paid sergeant who basically provides personal security, fetches the mayor's breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and drives him around in a city-issued vehicle while also getting a stipend. So this individual has allegiance to the mayor and was motivated to not capture what Curtis Purdy stated to me, but was motivated to capture what I said. And this was the second time, and this was the second time he used the body cam footage. They turn this footage over to the media often, and once it's on the media desk, they sprinkle their magic on it, and it turns into something totally different from what the intended purpose was or what the scenario, in fact, was. And so then I'm often tasked with damage control and trying to paint a different picture for the public, which I essentially have decided that no longer am I interested in chasing down and making things right. But what I will do is continue to speak up, speak out, and advocate for those who are most vulnerable among us as I continue to advocate for lowering taxes. I continue to advocate for integral behavior and actions within our local government, as well as how we are treating our city staff and assuring that we have adequate services. And so you asked the question, what, what, what are the council's rules? Do you exercise these rules? Yes, the rules and the punishment, if you will, it's been used on me, and it's been used on me for things that no one heard, that was not captured on a body cam. It's been used on me for things that people just made up and said. But you have a guy who actually was captured in a live city council meeting saying, "Shut up."
He did, he did say, he did make a post, I want to read this here. This is what he actually posted on Facebook. He said, "Did I tell the older woman at large to shut up? Of course I did. I did not apologize for saying it. I'm sick and tired of the nastiest and lies that come out of her mouth. She thinks it's okay to make homophobic remarks and call people names, especially during a meeting. I'm offended, and so are the citizens of Savannah. You can't act like you care about LGBTQ people or other groups and make the remarks that you do. If anybody needs to apologize, it's her. I will always have and always will stand up for those who have been oppressed or bullied. It's time to get back to work. God bless." Final comment, your reaction?
You know, this piece I find problematic about that is, one, as I stated, he was bold enough to do what he did. Two, he was not smart enough to post that social media as a police officer. And number three, you're lying. Not only did you commit the act, but you're lying about why you committed the act. And when I said this is dangerous political warfare, Curtis Purdy knows that I have the heart and spirit of this community in the palm of my hands. And he knows that I personally have dedicated my work through the Rape Crisis Center, as well as just a person, a citizen of Savannah, to assisting individuals in the LBG2TQ+ community here in Savannah and outside of Savannah, and my family even. And so what I won't do, because what I don't like for people to do is to tell me how many black friends they have to say that they're not racist, right? We're not gonna do that. But what we will do is we will continue to let my work, my life's work, and my current work speak for me. And so the fact that he lied about why he told me to shut up, because I, it wasn't, nothing was captured. It was nothing remotely close to where a homophobic remark would have fit or matched. And he said the same thing, and he says that I said these homophobic remarks because he's married to a man. And he says that I called him a pedophile, and that's why he called me a ghetto bitch. Well, the last time I checked, gay people are not pedophiles. And so that, that doesn't match, it doesn't make sense. He's reaching, he's grabbing, and he's digging a deeper hole for himself. He was honest enough to say he said it. Well, just say you said it, because that's what's in your heart and in your spirit.
Got it.
And the definition of bullying, but the definition of a bully is a person where there is imbalance of power, is where behavior happens frequently and continually. I see this person twice a month at the city council meetings. We don't say anything to each other unless he's challenging me on council, that is. And he carries a badge and a gun. How can I bully you, right? And so this is the same council, the irony that you should know, Mr. Martin, is that the mayor is African-American, and this is a majority African-American council. Seven out of nine of us are African-American. This is the same council who voted to desecrate the Weeping Time, the property where the largest sale of enslaved people, African people, happened right here in Savannah, Georgia. This is the same council, a super African-American majority council, who won't vote to change the name of Calhoun Square to Susie B. King Taylor Square. This is the same council who allows for us to go about, and this piece where he told me to shut up, this came about because I was reminding our city manager that we are focused on inclusion and equity. And we were denying yet another African-American establishment a liquor license, where we have 600 establishments here in Savannah, and fewer than 15 of them barely are owned by African-American people.
All right then. Well, look, uh, it sounds like still lots of drama there in Savannah, so certainly... So certainly keep us updated what happens there. We'd really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
We thank you for your interest.
Folks, we continue to examine Brittany Griner's case. That's been, of course, she's still in prison there in Russia. And you have WNBA players have announced that none of them will be playing in Russia as a result of this decision. One of the things that's real interesting is that her basketball coach, when she was at Baylor, Kim Mulkey, was asked about that. And her response today, let's just say, has caused a lot of people to say, wow, this is one we've been giving down about Griner. Listen to this.
Putting that collective group together. And then too, I just wanted to get your thoughts on Brittany Griner's situation. And I think I've seen anything from you on that and just can you?
And you won't. I'll answer the first one for you.
And how would you describe that process of putting that collective group together? And then too, I just wanted to get your thoughts on Brittany Griner's situation. And I think I've seen anything from you on that and just can you?
And you won't. I'll answer the first one for you.
Um, hmm. I wonder how Brittany Griner feels when the person who she helped win a national championship, that's how she feels. I'm Makongo Dabinga Professor Lectures, School of International Service, American University, Tanya Washington Hicks Professor, Georgia State University College of Law, Law on Victoria Burke, writer with the NMPA in the Rio. Damn, that was pretty dismissive, Lauren.
Yeah, it was. You would think you would just get the boilerplate response that this woman has effectively been kidnapped in Russia. And you would think they would be just on a very basic human level, some sort of expression of concern for her. And, you know, I don't know what the hell that was. She didn't really say enough for you to be able to figure out exactly what she was thinking one way or the other. But the fact that she expressed absolutely no concern for Ms. Griner is sort of ridiculous, right? I mean, are you really speaking as if you don't know this person? This is somebody she knows, not as if it's a complete stranger. So that was a very strange response.
I just know, help Mulkey win two national championships at Baylor, including a 40-0 season, which frankly got her the bigger promotion and bigger money at LSU.
Right. It's amazing, isn't it, how, you know, once again, we're the talent, we're the people who bring the money in and bring sell tickets and get people into the seats. And then, you know, other people profit from that, okay? And there's like no acknowledgement whatsoever of concern or, you know, like I said, just an absolute boilerplate statement that we've heard a trillion times that Ms. Griner should be brought home would have done in that situation. She seemed to be wanting to make a point of not wanting to make any sort of comment like that. I thought that was fairly strange.
Well, it's clear Tanya Mulkey doesn't give one damn about Brittany Griner. I mean, my goodness, and you won't? Like, not even? I'm sad to see that one of my former players, who helped me get two national championship titles, is having to endure this? Nothing? Really? Nothing?
I mean, you know, I don't know Brittany Griner. And yet, as a human being and as a black woman, I am sympathetic to the situation that she's in. And you would think that a coach who clearly has had a relationship with Ms. Griner that profited her and advanced her career, that that transaction would extend to a recognition of her humanity and a statement to that effect. But I think we need to recognize that some of these relationships that we think might create some actual affection or respect are purely transactional.
Well, this is also the same Mulkey who was one of the votes who derided having to wear masks during COVID. And, you know, she's, that's the kind of person that she is, frankly, Omikongo.
Yeah, and I think that she's shown herself and her personality through her actions like that multiple times. And really, at the end of the day, this actually ties into your last segment, really, because we need to force people to respect our sisters, period, bottom line. And to be, when you talked about the sister Congresswoman Keisha and how she's not feeling protected by the mayor there and other people there, this also translates over into what this coach is doing. And so I'm thinking about the students who are there. They should be making statements against this coach as well. Because to not show a calming humanity, just as Tanya was saying, not just for a human being, but for somebody, as Lauren was saying, who helped you get a lot of money by winning those titles, and you can't even show a level of compassion. You are a leader of women. You're supposed to be the highest representative of true character and leadership and compassion. That's your job as a coach, not just to get people to win games. And she's feeling that at every level, not to say, and you won't, just to brush it off like that. I feel like it's a serious lack of leadership. And I feel like the women who are part of that program and anyone else who supports it also need to call her out.
Absolutely, absolutely. Folks, I don't know, have many of y'all seen this video that's been circulating? It's a trip. So white guy comes up to the door, bought some solar panels. And y'all get the clip ready. And, you know, brother walks out, something quite interesting happens. See, these doorbell cameras, y'all, really are causing some drama. So y'all got the clip ready? All right, y'all, this actually happened. Watch this.
Hello? Hey, how you doing? Hey, sorry to bother you. I'm Fernando. I work for Peak Energy. We're a few doors down. We're in 1845. So we do solar around here. We're just coming around talking to niggers. Sorry, dude, neighbors. I apologize, man.
Wow.
Um, so, oomka kongo? Go ahead. Oh, my goodness. Um, damn. You know, again, Roland, this also ties into your first segment. I feel like people are just so emboldened nowadays that they can feel whatever they want to say whenever they want to say it. And people talk about 40 and slips and all of that other type of stuff. There's certain words that are just not going to come out of my mouth about certain people because that's just not in my heart. So this guy, wow. Um, yeah, I really thought that the brother was gonna swing on him. Like, I really thought that that was just gonna happen because I didn't know what to expect in this video. But this is part of the climate that we are in. And I know that people are gonna say, oh, well, just a slip up, it could happen to anybody. That's not true, Roland. That's not true. These people are showing what's in their heart. And he's just like, oh, I'm sorry, man. Like, they're supposed to be cool. Like, they're supposed to dap it up and just call it a day and then be like, yo, let me check out your solar panels. It doesn't work like that. And I hope that there's some real action that's gonna come from this brother towards this man and his whole company. He rang on his home doorbell and racially insulted him. Get paid, man. Get paid and call it a day. Wow.
Tanya, here's the thing. Um, I don't use the N-word. Stopped using it more than 20-plus years ago. It's like not the natural thing that's gonna come out of my mouth. So homeboys said it so easily and so smoothly. It's like, like he said it five minutes ago.
First of all, Roland, you were wrong for not preparing us for what we were about to see. That's not what I expected. But you read my mind because this man drops the N-word on a regular basis. The people who will say, oh, that could happen to anybody also frequently are fluent in the use of the N-word. And I think the guy regrets that he said it in that context. But I don't think that this is abnormal behavior. And thank God for cameras. I am so excited that we are capturing people's raw behavior when they think no one is watching. People in the park insulting people, Karens having meltdowns in various places. I mean, this is something we need to really look at as more the norm than the exception.
You know, the thing here, first of all, Lauren, Tanya is absolutely right. This is why I do love cameras. Because it is exposing folk for who they are. You know, my book, White Fear, I talk about this here. The things that people they say in private. Now all of a sudden, oh, they've been, you know, wearing the code. They've been, you know, just saying a certain thing. And now, yep, you're getting busted for it. You're getting busted for it.
Yeah, I think the cameras are a bit of a double-edged sword because the editors of these cameras tend to be sort of addicted to social media. And social media makes its money through conflict and through negativity, particularly Facebook. So what we see may in fact not be an accurate depiction of what most people do. We're just seeing more of human behavior than we've ever seen in any previous generation.
Yeah, but we're seeing it because, just like with police videos and others, for the longest, they would say, oh, this happened. But now they're contradicted by the actual evidence. And so I think in so many other cases, you see the white guy who was on the airplane who acted a fool and he was using the N-word and losing his mind and loses his job. And the white guy who tells a black woman, like, why are you at this pool? And she's like, I stay here. Well, show me your key card. What's happening is all of these interactions that for the longest folks could lie about, it's a little hard now to lie when we're actually seeing the video of you saying it coming out of your mouth where it used to be, oh, no, I didn't utter those words.
Well, what we are seeing, though, is the worst and most negative depictions of human interaction. What we don't see is all positive interactions that are probably making up the most predominant amount of video that we see, right?
No, yes, we do.
What sells online, what sells online is conflict.
I disagree. I disagree.
I'm not saying that it's not a benefit to see police video that's negative. It is a benefit to see what the police were doing. Frankly, I think our community knew the truth of that before the video. We're just now seeing the videos now. But we knew that that was true back when Malcolm X was starting.
No, 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 no. We, no, no, we knew it was true. No, no, but Lauren, the difference is here. We knew it was true, but when it came time for justice, it was always the cops' version also stood up. Just like when somebody said, oh, this store person called me the N-word. What was it? It was the sales guy, the sales guy at the store, I think it was in Texas. And he called, remember the black father was, took, very calmly walked this guy through. What was the guy's initial response when he got confronted? I didn't say that. Then it was kind of like, and we go to the videotape. So to me, the benefit is we have had to deal with the folks lying about these interactions for a very long time. Now these people are being busted for it. And now they're having to go up against the video to actually show it. And what it is showing, which I think is necessary, that what regular, ordinary interactions that black people are dealing with, this is the kind of crap we gotta deal with.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, as a journalist, I would never argue for less information, for less content, for less data. I just, I would just say that when we talk about what drives profit at social media companies, we know that that is based on conflict and negativity.
We're not having a social media driving profit conversation. What we're having is, what we're having is cameras are so ubiquitous, the things that people have done. Like, okay, the guy, the road rage incident in Texas. This guy jumps out of his car, pulls his gun out, and literally walks over and points at another driver. Well, the car behind him captured on a video. What ended up happening? That guy, they arrested that guy. And so luckily, what you're seeing is now with the proliferation of videos, the people who lied, and then it was kind of like, oh, you can't prove it. Well, now people can prove it. And so now folks are getting fired. Companies are having to pay various fines. That to me is the benefit. And so, look, I get people who are deceptively editing videos. But when you're seeing the continuous video feed, yeah, I'd say it's a damn good thing that's happening. And so you saw, and Tanya was right. That guy was like, damn, I can't believe I said that. Yes, you can, because you know why? You've been protecting your little voice for a very long time and it just flowed out easily. And yeah, he's real lucky he didn't get his ass knocked out.
And Roland? Yeah, I mean, obviously, that was an example of somebody saying something, obviously saying a word that he is accustomed to saying often. Because as you said before, nobody just says that word. That is known as the absolute taboo word of the century. Everybody knows that. So, I mean, the fact that he said it so easily is obviously a reveal to his true personality.
Absolutely. That was a reveal. Tanya, go ahead, real quick.
So, yeah, I agree that we need to be mindful of how people use negative videos on social media. But this was an objective camera. This was like a Ring camera. There wasn't someone out looking to see who is going to express negative behavior that they can then use to sensationalize on Facebook. And I think what we're seeing is people's true characters being revealed when they're not aware of it.
Yeah, this is sort of like those hidden camera experiments, how people actually react when their guard is not down. That's, I think, what we're seeing. And so I'm quite sure he had an interesting conversation when he got back to the office once the video became public. All right, y'all, gotta go to a break. We come back. What's happening with these HBCU classics? Are they dying out? Circle City Classic was Indianapolis this weekend. There was no game. They had bands, they had parties and other events, but there was no game. We'll talk to my man Scotty, Off Script TV, up next. Roland Martin Unfiltered. Be sure to download the Black Star Network app on all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. And of course, please join our Britney Funk Fan Club, where every dollar you give goes to support the show. Check your money orders, peelbox57196, Washington DC, 20037-0196. Cash app, dollar sign RM Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. We'll be right back.
Don't you think it's time to get wealthy? I'm Deborah Owens, America's Wealth Coach. And my new show on the Black Star Network focuses on the things your financial advisor or bank isn't telling you. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people-powered movement.
We've got a lot of stuff that we're not getting. You get it. And you spread the word.
We wish to plead our own cause. Too long have others spoken for us. We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it.
This is about covering us.
Invest in black-owned media.
Your dollars matter.
We don't have to keep asking them to cover our stuff.
So please, support us in what we do, folks.
We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month, wait $100,000. We're behind $100,000, so we want to hit that. Y'all money makes this possible.
Check some money orders. Go to peelbox57196, Washington DC, 20037-0196. The cash app is dollar sign RM Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com.
Hi, y'all doing? It's your favorite funny girl, Amanda Seales.
Hi, I'm Anthony Brown from Anthony Brown and Group Therapy.
I'm Lana Wells, and you are watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, folks, the Circle City Classic for 40 years has been one of the top HBCU football classics in the country. Hundreds of thousands of people have attended the games. I mean, upwards of 60,000 won a game, folks. This year, the game took place. No, the game didn't take place. Right, there was a Circle City Classic, but there was no game. Instead, the classic was just Battle of the Bands and of the other events that are around the game. Scotty, the host of Off Script TV, joins us from Atlanta. Scotty, glad to have you here. The promoters told the Indianapolis Star that The promoters told the Indianapolis Star that frankly, it's been, it's cost them lots of money. They've had dwindling of football attendance at this game. And when this game started, it was one of the preeminent classics. It was one of the largest, but you now have had such a proliferation of HBCU classics. We just saw one that was in New York, at the, actually in New Jersey, about 35,000 fans were there to see the Howard Morehouse game. Then you, of course, you've got the Florida State, you've got the Florida A&amp;M Jackson State Classic, you've got the one in Memphis, you've got the one in Dallas. But the Chicago Football Classic, no game this year, and I think the Atlanta Classic has been discontinued, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's where the, the 100 Black Men used to be at. They don't do that either.
So, uh, I mean, so are you surprised to see that the Circle City Classic, I mean, again, one of the most prominent ones, no game? They were like, eh, nobody was going to the game anyway, so we'll just bring the bands in.
I mean, that's what HBCU fans want anyway. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, they love their bands. I don't think it's much about football anyway. But talking to a few people that have been around the sport and just a couple of people that actually went to the event, and they spoke to some coordinators, they just said, it was, I, I heard it on two sides, they had scheduling conflicts, that a lot of teams, when they reached out, their schedule was already packed, so they couldn't get there. And then you had other people saying that people are trying to get away from classics. They know that it's not in the best benefit of a lot of football programs, because you're usually taking a southern program that's come all the way up north to Indianapolis, you're, you're not, you know, you're paying, they have to pay for the expenses, pay for the band. And if you're not paying them a certain amount of money, it actually, they may, they may break even, they may lose something. So, you know, classics aren't generating as much revenue as they once were.
Uh, and, and it's interesting because you take Chicago, Chicago has the third largest concentration of African Americans in the country. There's no HBCU there, you have a PBI, Chicago State University, and even when they have that game at Soldier Field, it's not a packed out game, you got three and a half, I mean, you got, you know, a million eight, 2 million black folks in, in Chicago.
Yeah, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they even have the Black Hall of Fame game up, right, you know, around the same time the NFL has their start off of the kickoff and that game is in, isn't predominantly packed as well. So it's, I was more surprised, if I'm being honest, that I saw as many people pack out MetLife. It was over 35,000 Morehouse and Howard fans that attended the game and I thought that was an amazing crowd to have at MetLife. But, you know, you just, with, with the, with Circuit, with the Circle City Classic, you know, they've had a changing of the guard. It's, it's no, it's nothing like the Southern Heritage Classic where it's a Tennessee State, Jackson State, you know, you know what you're going to get. You know, for the past four to five years, Kentucky State was their bread and butter. They were always at the Circle City Classic, you know, they were, they showed up and showed out, but the, the tennis still dwindled and they're a Division Two team. So I'm shocked that they couldn't have got Kentucky State back up to the Circle City Classic to have some type of game. And in 2019, Kentucky State played Jackson State, which they beat. So, you know, they've been up there.
Is this also an indication that frankly, when we look at these games, that at the end of the day, for fans, they want to see best talent? And frankly, are, are fans also saying they simply don't see HBCU football games as being really interesting competitive games? And to your point, they're like, all right, show me halftime.
I mean, it, it's usually always been about the bands, you know, and everybody's watched Drumline, halftime is game time, you know? So, um, I think that's the narrative that Deion is trying to change down at Jackson State, that, you know, you can get some talent, you can recruit the right people, you can put a good or a great product on the field like they have in other programs in the MEAC like North Carolina Central has and how South Carolina State has. So you can put a good product on, but you also need the fans to come and support the game, not the halftime, not the tailgating, not the fashion show at the, at the stadium, because you want to see somebody, you want somebody to see how you look, they got to come and support the game.
But here's the deal though, but if I don't have a tie to the school, I mean, let's, perfect example, I'm a Texas A&amp;M graduate. I'll be honest, I don't have an association with another school. So if I live in Indianapolis, I live in Chicago, I mean, okay, two schools come in, all right, I'm not necessarily, I mean, look, I'm born and raised in Houston. I lived in Chicago six years. I didn't give a damn about the Chicago Bears. I didn't go to any games. I didn't care. So, so it's, and also I think television, streaming has also changed the game, because even on the whole point about, okay, I want to see halftime show. Well, actually, if I want to see halftime, I can go to YouTube and literally watch shows now live. And so I, I think at the end of the day, uh, and it's also for the classics, you are expecting fans to travel. Well, if you're playing several classics, as a fan, you like, well, am I going to travel to, if I'm grambling, am I going to travel to Dallas for the state, state fair class? I'm going to travel to the Bayou class, I'm going to travel here? I mean, I think this is also part of the deal and schools are also saying, it's your point, if we ain't making money off of this, why we doing this?
Yeah, I mean, it, it goes back to two foes. You have schools not promoting their players, so you don't even know who I'm coming to see.
Right.
You know, there's no, there's no, there's no interest to say, oh, I want to see this special player, or I want to see this special talent. The bands get all the promotion because they know the band is good, they know, you know, the music they're going to play, or they know how they're going to sound. So there's an expectation there. But when you're going to see a football game, you don't know who the starting quarterback is, you don't know who your star player is, you don't know why I should come see this game or why it's important, other than the pageantry around the game, you start losing core football people who are interested in actually the game. And then, then I have to go travel hundreds of miles or, you know, a few hours out of my way to go when I can watch it online or I can watch another game at that same time, you start losing the fan attendance.
Um, bringing my panel right now, you know, Omicron Go, uh, I mean, look, it's interesting that when you look at a lot of these events, whether we want to own up to it or not, would attract fans? It ain't the event, it's the stuff around the event. It's the step show, it's the halftime show, it's the parties, and so the folks in Indianapolis were like, what the hell? We just going to do all that stuff and say the hell with the game?
Absolutely. It's, it's very interesting and this kind of goes back to the conversation we were having last week when, when Scotty was on, when we were talking about Deion Sanders and HBCUs. I think that it's really important that the, that many people within the HBCU community, people like Deion Sanders and heads of programs and marketing departments, really start to come together and start looking at new ways to reach our audiences, because really at the end of the day, this, this particular classic has been going on, what, since like 1984? And you said over 60,000 people that have attended at one point? But we're in a new age now where people are able to stream, where people are able to do so much and we have to ask ourselves the question, is HBC, is the leadership of, of our schools and our organizations, are they really working to meet the new times? Because other organizations and professional sports and, and regular other college sports, they're still filling up the stadiums, they're still having, you know, people who are, you know, getting crazy ratings in terms of watching the, the games on television and the like. We need to look at ways to make our stuff more appealing in this new age that we're in. And if we don't do that, I feel like these are not going to be the exceptions, they're going to end up being the rule for other classics down the line.
Um, the, Tanya, uh, the thing here is, I just think that when we are now talking about this sports piece, you know, we're just living in a whole different world these days. And guess what? If you want fans to come out, it's a lot of competing options for the dollar of those fans.
Absolutely. And I attended a PWI, I graduated from James Madison University. And so the first time I went to an Atlanta Classic with my cousin, at halftime, I got up to go to the bathroom and she's like, wait a minute, we came for this. And so, so I, I want to add to the mix of things that may be influencing what we're seeing, the, the pandemic that we're still living through. I wonder if there were some realities around that pandemic that may have influenced the decision to, to cancel this particular classic.
Uh, well, again, Scotty, the story that I read, with the prologist, simply say it from a cost benefit analysis, if, if the folk only coming there to hear the bands, what the hell, no sense in bringing in the football team and everything else that goes along with it. Now you're talking about either flying them in, busting them in, you're talking about support staff, that's a lot of, and then paying the game check.
Yeah.
Now, now, now I do hope that the bands got a check.
They did, they did, they got $30,000. So, but, you know, to her, living through the pandemic, they played the game last year. Benedict and Kentucky State played last year. So, um, and once again, like I said, Kentucky State has been a staple there. So, uh, so I don't think that was the cause, but when you have, like, like Roland, you have so many cost benefit analysis and you talk about it all the time, running the businesses, you gotta, you want to be in the black, so it doesn't make sense for me to bring in an ancillary part of the, the revenue that people aren't really coming to see anyway. But I have to still pay out, you know, a hundred to $200,000 for a part of the, part of the action that people really don't want to come see anyway, when I can make money just selling tickets to a band event. And if anything, if you know anything about the HBCU culture, I mean, they had Battle of the Bands not too long ago, and I think they got about 40,000 people in the stadium at the Battle of the Bands. So it's, it's, it's a culture in its own, it's a culture in its own.
Yep, uh, Lauren.
I know we're talking about classics, but like in the last three weeks, I went to see Hampton play Howard and then I went to see Norfolk State play Hampton, Battle of the Bay, uh, at Norfolk State. And, uh, I kind of tell you, people were riveted to the game. Now, of course, they were special games, it's kind of like homecoming or the first game of the year. And obviously with two HBCUs play each other, it's a big deal, particularly in Virginia. And when Hampton played Norfolk State, there, there was a line going from the ticket booth that was unbelievable, uh, and then there was a line to get in, just, it was just hard to get in, you know? But at any rate, obviously you're right, everybody was there very excited about the bands, uh, and, um, you know, there's no denying that, but, but I would not like totally laugh at, at the game, even though Norfolk State and Hampton, I think Howard actually is 3-0 now, but, but Norfolk State is not very good at all. But when it's a special game and homecoming.
Yeah, but see, but that, but that's, but, yeah, right, but those are, that's, that's a different deal. So for instance, because now you're talking about two fan bases and yet it's a homecoming game, that's different. The, the, what's happening now with these classics is what you're seeing is you're seeing people now shine a light on these games and now the financial realities, why are we traveling? Because what people don't realize is, when a team travels for a classic, they're giving up a home game. So all of a sudden, and all of a sudden, you're now on the road. And so I think, I think, I think the number of this, Scotty, I think what, Grambling only has three home games this year? And they're constantly between the road games and the classics. And so you start asking yourself the question, we spending a lot of money on the road going to classic and is there a, is it frankly financially beneficial to be doing that versus playing on the road where there's no travel? We can play in a home stadium, sell tickets, concessions, parking, and for your fan base, if they're coming back to your campus, they're bringing money back. I'm a Texas A&amp;M graduate, Texas A&amp;M plays Arkansas, Jerry Jones cuts a big ass check for Arkansas and Texas A&amp;M to give up a home game to play in Dallas in his stadium. Now, he's an Arkansas graduate, but that's a big check, several million dollars, because those two schools can make a ton of money if it's a home and home.
And, and this is the thing, see, she's, Ms. Lauren's talking about, you know, Norfolk State and, you know, Hampton and Howard, like, go to a game where Norfolk State is playing Morgan and tell me if you see the same attendance. Go, go to a game when Hampton's playing Delaware State or Howard's playing Delaware State and tell me if you see the same attendance and that's the problem. If you're a football fan and you're supporting your school, you just go to the game.
Right.
Like, it doesn't matter who you're playing, it's like, yo, I'm supporting my school.
Like, at A&amp;M, we had 100,000 people watching Texas A&amp;M play San Houston State.
Because they, they're there for the game, they're there for the team and that's what you lack at a lot of HBCUs. And this is the, and this is the backwards business that happens at HBCUs. Okay, if I'm grambling and I have a promoter coming to me saying, hey, I want to move you to Houston, I want to move you to Dallas, well, you're going to pay me five to four times what I would make at home to get me to move, because that's the only way it's going to be beneficial to me. But instead of you giving me, you're, you're going to give me what I made or maybe less than what I made just to say, oh, I'm going to put you on TV? That doesn't, that doesn't do me anything, because you're making all the money on the back end being a promoter. So I, I just, it, it has to do with better business that has to be done by HBCUs if you do decide to be in the class. And then it also has to make sense of who you're playing, just don't go play no any old body. And I think that's the Circle City Classics issue, that they don't have a staple team, so you don't know who's going to be there next year. You're like, you know, it might be Kentucky, it might be Howard, it might be Morehouse, you never know.
Absolutely. All right, Scotty, certainly appreciate it, folks, subscribe to Scotty's channel on YouTube, Off Script TV, you definitely want to check it out. And so he keeps it wild and crazy on his show, so you don't want to miss that. Appreciate you joining us, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Folks, we come back, we'll talk about the environmental justice movement launching in North Carolina 40 years ago. EPA Administrator Michael Regan was there, was in Warren, Warrington, North Carolina on Saturday with the big announcement. We'll have that for you and also share with you some of the people who were involved in the fights they were engaged in to fight environmental racism. Also, uh, fitness coach Avery Wood is going to be joining us. How do we change our mindset when it comes to working out? She says, don't look at it as a laborious task, so we're going to break it down. You can also give us a call, so here's a phone number to give us a call, folks. Want to get your thoughts, you can ask her your questions when it comes to fitness, when it comes to working out, all that good stuff. All right, come on, y'all, pull the number up, please. Thank you. 202-890-1199, 202-890-1199, 202-890-1199. Get, get in line now so you can ask Avery your questions. We'll be right back on Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are Black beyond measure.
I've always said this, rather than to continue to fight for a fair piece of the pie and, and the equal slice of the pie, I want my hand on the knife that cuts the pie. And to that extent, who bakes the pie and who, who puts it in? And that's one of the things that got me involved in going into politics in the first instance. I'm tired of people making decisions for me.
Right.
And mine. I want to be a part of that decision making process. And luckily, it has paid off in terms of seeing the progress that many people in America have made, particularly people of color. One thing bothers me now that we seem to be losing that.
Right.
By saying that we've got to be more concerned with other people than those people who are here.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves that move us all forward. Together, we are Black beyond measure.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, a white nationalist rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
There's an angry pro-Trump mob storm to the U.S. Capitol. We've seen shots.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at Emory University calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking
Hey, I'm Antoneek Smith.
Hey, I'm Arneaz Jane.
Hi, this is Cheryl Lee Ralph, and you are watching Roland Martin Unfiltered. I mean, could it be any other way, really?
All right, folks, on Saturday, we were in Warrington, North Carolina for the Environmental Protection Agency's announcement, where they are combining, making some changes in their agency, going to have 200 people dedicated in their agency. Going to have 200 people dedicated to this whole issue of environmental justice and civil rights. Uh, Michael Regan, who is the administrator, uh, he signed this agreement there. He, of course, uh, is from North Carolina. Uh, he's a graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T. Y'all see me, I'm rocking the A&amp;T shirt today. Uh, and so he is, uh, you can turn the audio up there. Uh, he is signing this agreement here. Uh, listen to it. All right. So, uh, he's, so he signed the agreement there surrounded by a number of activists in North Carolina. Uh, these were folks, uh, who were there. These were the people who were fighting, um, at the time, four, four, 40 years ago, 40 years ago, uh, in North Carolina, uh, they were protesting what was happening. Uh, let, pull this up right here. I'm actually, I'm gonna play this back. I want you to play that. Pull it up. So, so, so there, so what you saw there was folks, he was, uh, giving his pen to one of the women who was, who started the whole activism there. It was, uh, it was an amazing day. When I talk about this fight, they literally were trying to stop, um, uh, the state was allowing these, uh, plants to, to dump all of these toxic chemicals there. Uh, and it was a six-week protest, uh, that folks were engaged in. It was a battle. People went to jail. 500 people, uh, went to jail. Children were involved, uh, in this. And it truly, truly was, uh, an amazing, an amazing, uh, uh, event that took place there. Uh, and when you talk about what this meant, Reverend Dr. William J. Barber was one of the speakers, uh, Saturday, uh, and this is what he had to say.
All that matters in the movement is that you're in it. However you get it. Moses had a stutter. Elijah had depression. Jeremiah had tears and Jesus was acquainted with sorrow. But they were in the movement. And thank God for you allowing me to be here today, Secretary Reagan, Congresswoman G.K. Butterfield, who I remember when you integrated, desegregated courts in East North Carolina and desegregated Wilson County. Congresswoman Clayton, I grew up sleeping on your floor way back in the day when my father, Leon White and others used to meet over in Bricks, North Carolina. I remember the PCBs here when they were dumping them in the, um, uh, ditches at night and folk were having prayer revivals because so many people were coming down with cancer. And Leon White and others, my father, late William Barber, said, why don't we go out at night and find out what's causing the cancer? Not just pray about the cancer. And that's when they found the trucks. Remember Dolly? Putting them out. You know, it's been a, a long struggle and we still have a long struggle to go. So much so that my son is here today, who is an environmental lawyer and, uh, today and working with climate reality. And I come in today to represent Poor People's Campaign, also repairs of the breach. Uh, and I heard somebody at the Poor People's Campaign. Secretary Reagan and to President Biden and most of all to of all the poor and low wage communities across this nation, which makes up 140 million people. That's how many poor and low wealth people we have in the richest nation in the world. 140 million. That's 43% of the adult population and 52% of all the children in America. Four million people who today get up every morning and can buy unleaded gas and can't buy unleaded water. That's why Secretary Reagan, you have come to this position for such a time as this.
Folks, um, we livestreamed, uh, this entire, uh, event on, uh, Saturday. You can actually go to our, uh, YouTube channel or go to the Black Start Network. You can see all of this. But when I talk about, uh, the work that these folks were doing, what they were engaged in, what they were actually fighting and changing, uh, it, it really was tremendous in how they just simply were sick and tired of being sick and tired. Eva Clayton, uh, was a county commissioner there, uh, and she later, of course, went into Congress and she talked about again, how this environmental justice, uh, movement began right there in North Carolina.
Do well on live and wait for.
Uh, let's talk about this, uh, this event, but also what happened, uh, here, uh, that really, uh, put the focus on environmental justice. Uh, for folks who haven't, who had no idea, who didn't know about this history, um, how critical was it, the work that they did? You and others?
Well, dead critical. You know, those who were on the process line brought it to the attention of other people, right? But as Dolly said, it was a really a community effort. The people who you didn't see on the lines. It was the mothers who fed them, the ministers who prayed. I, in nineteen, in 1982, I was a member of.
Um, let's see here, folks. Uh, we had, just having some issues right here, uh, with the frame rate of that particular, uh, interview. Let me, uh, see if I can go ahead, uh, and pick it back up, uh, where Eva was talking. So, um, so we'll, we'll try to get that straight. But what I'll do this here, uh, Ben Chavis was one of the folks, of course, uh, activist. Uh, he was one of the folks who was arrested at that time, and he also shared with us what took place. Announcement by the EPA Administrator, uh, a huge deal, but it was the work of regular, ordinary people, long time ago, that made today's announcement possible.
Right. 40 years ago, I am 500.
My name is Dolly Burwell.
Uh, and Dolly, for folks who don't know about this story, uh, this being the home of the environmental justice movement, explain what you and others did, um, what, 40 years ago?
Yeah, Roland, 40 years ago, uh, me, I organized my community because the state of North Carolina had done, chose Warren County to bury over 30,000 gallons of PCB laced oil, uh, soil in, in a landfill in Warren County. And we knew that it was not right. We knew it was unjust and, and I knew that what does God require you but to do justice, love mercy and walk humbly with thou God. So I knew it was wrong. We knew it was wrong. We organized our community for six weeks, for six weeks long. We went to jail every day, uh, and we stayed on the case until this landfill was detoxified and cleaned up in 2004.
How many people, uh, were involved?
Oh, it was more than 500. It was more than 500 that was arrested. It was thousands that came to Warren County in March, but over 500 men, women and children, men, women and children was arrested in Warren County. And that's why today I'm called the mother of the environmental justice movement. But I'm looking forward, Roland, to be, to that day when I can be called a grandmother, when some of these young people will take up the mantle. And I was encouraged because last Saturday, we had the 40th anniversary and we had over 500 young people. And so I am just so encouraged and today has just been monumentous, monumental.
This is one of those issues we talk about all the time. This is one of those issues that when we talk about environmental justice, uh, a lot of our people might think in terms of, oh, that's white folks who are doing that stuff, not African Americans.
Well, you know, after, after 1982, a lot of people really realized that it was us who was suffering the effects of environmental racism. Because up until 1982, uh, people thought the environment consists of the birds, that, you know, the trees, the indigenous.
Folks, folks would say, oh, they had the hugging trees.
Right. But, but we knew that your environment is where you live, where you work, where you play, where you go to school. And anything that affect your environment is, is, is environmental justice, environmental racism. So, um, what grew out of Warren County was a real education piece around envi- environmental justice and what was happening in communities of color all over, all over the world, really, all over.
So, so what do you say to the folks right now? Because the reality is, we heard the speakers from Lawrence County, Alabama, from Louisiana, Cancer Alley. We've had them on my show as well. The people out there who, African American who say, look, man, that ain't our issue. We got other stuff we were talking about. But, you know, look, I grew up in Houston. Literally the, the, um, port of Houston was like in my backyard. Those chemical plants were right there. They mean, I can still smell that, uh, those, those, those plants, uh, right now. This is, this is still our reality in 2022.
Let me just, let me just tell you this. Prior to 1982, Warren County, Warren County had always been a predominantly black county. During slavery, there were 14,000 slaves. There were 603 Negroes. There were only 4,000 whites. After that.
Now, folks, uh, as I said, Ben Chavis was, uh, one of the folks, uh, who was there, uh, who was there fighting, uh, and got arrested there as well. Uh, Michael Regan, who was the EPA Administrator, as I said, uh, is a graduate of North Carolina, uh, A&amp;T. He is from, uh, that state, native of that state. Uh, and here is our conversation about why it was important, uh, to do this, uh, to sign this agreement, establishing this new office, this reorganization in the NPA, marrying environmental justice and civil rights. Be a native of this state, knowing this history and now being in the position, uh, to come here with the announcement, uh, of this office.
It's, it's full circle personally. Uh, son of North Carolina, Eastern North Carolina, you know, sharing the hometown with William Barber, uh, watching Dr. Ben Chavis as I grew up here in the state and knowing the history of Warren County. Uh, it's an honor to share this history with these people, but it's full circle for me and it's a special, special feeling.
And obviously when, when we think about what the folks here did, uh, I often use this phrase, even when we talk about folks in the Black Freedom Movement, these are just ordinary people who did extraordinary things.
Absolutely. Uh, people were just fed up and tired of what was happening. Uh, wasn't getting a response from the government. So they literally said, we're just going to go out and lay in the middle of the road and wait for trucks to threaten to drive by and kill us. And I think that that's a serious decision that any parent has to make when they know they have children at home, a job to show up for at work. And so, um, just to be here and hear those personal stories, uh, the fear that people had, but the, the calling to do it. Uh, it, it was for this community, but it started a national movement.
On that particular point there, uh, when you, when you talk about that, that, that national movement, uh, it really was about, uh, individuals just not, not accepting what corporations were doing, but also challenging politicians to saying, you have to do better to protect us from these type of, uh, interests, intruding interests that have, that has a detrimental impact on our health.
I think they said basically our lives are just as valuable as the lives on the other side of the tracks. And you're not going to continue to dump on us. We're not going to take these cancer causing agents in our water. We're going to protect our children, even if you don't. So we're standing outside of a courthouse that didn't protect them. Uh, we're standing close to a police station that didn't protect them. And the folks in Raleigh at the time weren't protecting them. So they took the matters into their hands. And listen, they did the only thing that they knew they could do. They laid in the middle of a road to try to stop dump trucks. I mean, I think there's nothing more powerful than that and that takes a lot of courage, man.
Uh, when we look at, uh, that history, but also now look at what took place in Flint, what's happening in Jackson, uh, what's happening with Cancer Alley in Louisiana, what's happening, uh, with, uh, the DOJ looking at, uh, environmental issues in Houston. I mean, we, we, we still are dealing with, uh, a significant issue of environmental racism and folks demanding environmental justice all across this country.
Absolutely. I mean, the data speaks for itself. The issues speak for themselves. We know that black and brown communities have been disproportionately impacted for generations. We've seen the indifference, the lack of investment, uh, the political malfeasance. And so people have stepped up, but that's, that's what President Biden heard when he was campaigning. And this is the first president that has made environmental justice and equity, racial equity, a centerpiece of the administration. The first president during a State of the Union address to talk about environmental justice. Uh, the president is serious about it. Leadership starts at the top. That empowers all of us to do what we're doing. And that's why I took the time to change the structure of EPA, to elevate Title VI Civil Rights and Environmental Justice to the highest levels of EPA. Government has failed a lot of people in this country. That's federal, state and local. We can't deny that. Let's quit denying it and let's focus on what are the solutions.
It was interesting when I was talking to Ben Chavis, he said, uh, he struggled back then in 82 to get civil rights organizations to understand that this environmental racism was a civil rights issue.
Absolutely. I think that now, and there was a time, Roland, where, uh, the movements wanted to be separate. The environmental justice movement did not want to be a part of the civil rights movement. Title VI was over here. Environmental justice is over there. What we've done is we've combined the two because we know that they interact with the same communities and we can leverage the resources, the legal minds, the technical ability to solve these problems. So again, it's full circle. We have civil rights leaders and environmental justice leaders here today, arm in arm, clapping about the elevation of both into one office with billions of dollars flowing to both of these offices. This is a new day, man. This is a powerful, powerful statement by the Biden administration and we're just getting started.
So explain what exactly will this office do? I mean, I, I heard folks talk about it's going to be two staff, staffed by 200 people. Uh, you know, is it going to be housed here? Is it going to be based here? And what will they actually do?
So we launched from Warren County to respect and honor the movement and the symbolism. But we're going to have a hundred, over 100 employees at headquarters in Washington DC. And then we're going to have 100 employees in all 10 regions. So essentially I took two offices or three offices at EPA, combined them together and elevated them to the highest levels. And they will be responsible for the distribution of the $3 billion coming from the Inflation Reduction Act. It's important to know that the leader of this environmental justice and external civil rights office will be a presidential appointee that will be Senate confirmed. It's the highest you can get in terms of political influence in an agency, will report directly to me, and they will be in every meeting that we have when we're designing policies and regulations. So the permeation and sort of, uh, implementation of all that we do, it will be done through that lens of environmental justice and civil rights.
There was a young lady who, uh, spoke today, uh, and talked about her being a part of this. And it's very interesting when I talk to folks who are protesters, uh, there are people who say, you know, I, I want to get involved. And we're now seeing a new generation of folks who now, who want to become civil rights attorneys, who now want to become environmental attorneys, people who now understand, uh, that you need, uh, freedom fighters, not just in the streets, but also in those critical positions.
Absolutely. I think that my first experience was that with Jesse Jackson, when, you know, basically he talked about the advocacy in the pulpit, on the streets and in the corporate boardrooms. I think we're seeing that continue to, to spread. And I think young people are understanding that when you want to tackle environmental racism, you can do that through multiple disciplines, through engineering, through law, through science. It's how we bring all of that information together to inform the laws and the regulations that we are governing ourselves by. And so I'm inspired to see people from different generations, different disciplines, say, I know that I have a role in environmental justice and I know exactly where that fits and this is how I'm going to play in the game.
And when I was talking to, uh, Dolly, she said they were inspired because they had an event yesterday. She said, well, 500 young people who were there. And so this has now become, uh, a central issue. Well, I, I say part of this intersection, uh, of issues, uh, that, that in addition to mass incarceration, criminal justice reform, education, this is now, uh, one that is actually, uh, you know, getting bigger and bigger and it plays a major role in how young folks vote.
Oh, it absolutely does. And it's, you have to work harder to separate all this stuff than you do to combine it. And I think when you think about climate justice and climate change and environmental justice, uh, young people are excited because they're going to inherit the planet. Uh, it's going to impact the economy. It's going to impact where they can live, where they can get jobs.
Some of them are even saying that's why they're not having children. I mean, that, I mean, that, that, that's a monumental decision.
Oh, it is. I mean, this really, we have to, as, as sort of the quote unquote older folks, have to take serious what kind of condition we're leaving the planet to these young folks. And it's not just the physical planet. It's how we're leaving the economy. Where the jobs going to be? What types of jobs? Is the United States going to be globally competitive? Is the United States going to be energy secure, nationally secure? These are the things that young people are saying, hey, I have to get involved if I'm going to have a chance.
I've, I've been talking to a lot of people about, uh, the initiative when it comes to electric vehicles, uh, trying to improve our power grid, things along those lines. Uh, and you still have this contentious battle where you have folks on one side who want to maintain fossil fuels, keep doing things how we're always doing it and not wanting to even consider, uh, other alternatives. And we keep hearing, you know, what costs too much. Uh, and, and what I keep saying is part of the problem, I think in this country, we wait until something blows up, something falls apart to go, okay, let's hurry up and fix it as opposed to how about we fix it before it gets irreparably damaged?
That's right. And, and we're starting to see a lot of companies and a lot of industry just say, give that argument up. Now they want to be on the right side of history. Part of that is because young people are changing the market demand. So now companies have to keep up with the demand that the, of the market because young people are influencing that. I think also Roland, technology, technology is playing a huge role here. Now, when we look at the investments of clean energy, is the cost of coming down is cheaper than fossil fuels. So a lot of political rhetoric in Washington DC and these state houses is all about, um, you know, the, uh, climate change ideology. The reality is, is that the markets, technology, business models, energy security, national security, all these things that young people. security, all these things that young people are paying attention to, climate change and clean energy favors that transition.
Last question. There's somebody right now who is on the fence about voting. There's a brother out there, there's a sister out there, and they're saying, hey, you know, I'm just not sure. I don't think my vote matters. You know, I don't see anything actually happening. You obviously can't advocate for a party or for individuals, but talk about how it is important people to understand that their vote has a direct impact on how public policy gets changed, for good or for bad.
Oh, yeah. I mean, number one is power and number. So if you want to win, you want to get the right number count. Number two, if your vote isn't in the conversation, you won't be represented. And if the people that govern your state, your city, your country don't represent your interests, then you're going to get the short end of the stick. So the only way to get your voice heard is to use your voice, find a table to sit at, and be sure that you're explaining to people how you feel and how the future should be shaped. So every vote counts. We know that. And if we can drive voter turnout in this country, then the people who represent in this country will actually reflect the desires of the people.
All right. Well, we certainly appreciate it. Big announcement today, and thanks a bunch for having us here.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right, folks, we're going to air part two of a lot of these interviews tomorrow because this really is a huge issue. I want to go to my panel real quick to get their thoughts before we go to a break and go to our next guest. Tanya, it was just interesting to hear how, when this, 40 years ago, the environmental people did what, no part of this civil rights deal, and the black people kind of like, yo, 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 this is civil rights, this is environmental racism, y'all need to be on top of this.
Yeah, I mean, these issues are inseparable. Equality and justice cannot be disaggregated. So if you don't have clean water and there's lead in the water, then you're not going to get a quality education because it affects attention span and one's ability to actually learn. So all of these things are connected. And, you know, I think it's important that folks, particularly law students, like the ones who I educate, understand that if you want to do civil rights work, pick a context. Black folks are experiencing injustice across the continuum in a variety of contexts. Pick the thing that you're passionate about and get to work. Because 40 years ago, they never imagined that their work and putting their bodies in the movement would lead to this $3 billion investment in environmental equity.
And I'll say this, Omicongo, this is a perfect example. Black folks, when you look at all movements over the last 50-plus years, black folks have been at the center of nearly every single one.
And that was really the beauty of that whole segment, Roland, and I'm really looking forward to tomorrow's as well because when you were talking to the elder there, she was talking about how she was concerned for the future, that people weren't going to carry the torch. But then she talked about where, you know, over the weekend when they had their event, over 500 young people came out. And that's how the work continues. And people have to understand that there is no issue in this country as it relates to justice, whether it's environment, education, or something that does not affect black people. And black people have always been the people to lead us out of whatever issues we're going through in this country, and we cannot forget that. And it's also really important that we, as a community, have to understand, we have Hispanic people in this country, we have Native American people in this country, white people, Asian people, but black people are consistently number one in pretty much every disease. And if those of us who have not tied that to the environmental factors and the conditions that we live in, if we don't understand that now, some of us may never understand it. So I'm hoping with what you're doing with this segment, more of us are going to start to wake up. And lastly, I got to say, Secretary Regan does not get enough credit and he does not get enough props, and this is yet another area where the Biden administration has to do a better job in its marketing and messaging going into the midterms in 2024 because this environment is something that we all need to make safe for everybody.
You know, Lauren, on that particular point there, I mean, we were the only national media outlet that was there. You know, you had, I mean, I'm talking about, like, seriously, we get out there and you had a couple of local folks, you had a local NPR person. But, I mean, we're talking about, we're three hours away from DC, okay? So, you know, we left here at 8:30 in the morning, we got there 11:45, you know, we get set up, we get there, literally, there's no one there. I think the EPA streamed it, but that was it. And this is a huge, huge, huge announcement that came from the EPA.
Yeah, that's really strange because climate change issues are huge for the Democratic Party in particular, as they try to attract younger voters who see that as a top five issue. I know the drive that you made, Roland, quite well, as somebody who drives to my mother's house in Suffolk, Virginia, which is, you know, southern Virginia. But I don't understand how that didn't get more media because it is a huge demographic issue for younger voters, and typically advertisers are interested in that group. It's also a huge attractor of lobbying money. But then again, obviously, as we've seen at Joe Manchin several times, there's a lot of pushback from companies, Big Coal, et cetera, and so on. We talk about, you know, climate change issues. We see the foolish ideological debate, the lack of wanting to pay attention to science over on the right. But I'm surprised, frankly, that you were the only one who covered it. I think that's where we get into race, quite frankly, because I think had that been, you know, we've seen a few climate-related events in DC that were sort of predominantly white and got tons of press coverage. So I'm surprised at that still, though. Amazing.
Indeed. So again, part two tomorrow. So we'll hear from one of the white, one of the white folks who got protested, along with, we'll hear from former Congresswoman Eva Clayton, Ben Chavis as well, and we'll play more of what Reverend William Barber had to say as well to my panel. Thanks a lot. I certainly appreciate y'all joining us, Tanya, Lauren, and Omicongo. Certainly appreciate it. Thanks a bunch. Coming up next on our Fit to Win segment, a lot of y'all, you don't want to miss this segment with our guest, Avery Woodley. And a lot of y'all, y'all know how it is. Once you even hear workout, oh, my God, no. She says, if we have a different, we reframe our thought, how we approach working out, it actually can excite us in a different way. Y'all might be saying, you have lost your mind. She says, no, she's not crazy. She will explain. That's why she's laughing right now. That's why she's laughing right now. She'll explain next, right here on Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network. Download the app, all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. And of course, you could join our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Every dollar you give goes to support this show. Check-in money orders go to P O Box 57196, Washington, D.C., 20037-0196. Cash app, dollar sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle, Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure. Next, on A Balanced Life with me, Dr. Jackie. The great resignation is upon us. Yes, it's real. People, young and old, are evaluating their lives and making some determinations whether to stay or to go. But before you take the leap, you need to examine your motives and make a plan. It's not so much about doing this thing or starting this business or, you know, leaving where you are to do something different. It's about getting in touch with you. How to make change while also keeping balance, here on the next Balanced Life with me, Dr. Jackie, on Black Star Network. When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
It's Kim Woodley.
Yo, what's up? This is your boy, Ice Cube.
Hey, yo, peace, world. What's going on? It's the love king of R and B, Raheem Devine, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
Many of you, I've got a job killer music. I'm like many of y'all when it comes to working out, oh, my God, you like absolutely hate it. And I got a home gym. My next guest, she says that we should be thinking about and looking at working out and fitness in a totally different way. And then if we do, then that could greatly help us when it comes to meeting our goals. Joining us right now from St. Louis is, and she doesn't even call herself fitness coach, personal coach, Avery Woodley. Avery, glad to have you back on the show. So first of all, we'll start this way. Why do you not, why do you hate the phrase "fitness coach"?
You know what? I don't like the phrase "fitness coach" because to me, it's a mind, body, and soul experience, right? Like, I'm not just training somebody to lose weight or to reach fitness goals. As a trainer, it's everything. It's mental, it's spiritual, it's physical. So you're coaching the whole person, it's a personal experience. And so, and it goes into other, you know, aspects of their lives. So I'm a personal coach. I'm coaching the person.
And I shared the other day on Instagram, I shared this video, y'all roll it, this video here that I thought was really interesting. No, I don't have it, y'all have it. Did y'all download it? Let me see, hold on, I just pull it up here. And it was really interesting because you were talking about, you were talking about that how you view fitness totally different and what it means and what it means to you beyond just simply working out and how it impacts just everything about what you do. And I thought that was really an interesting way to approach it. Let me see if I can find it. I reposted, and a lot of people really responded, and it resonated with them. And even had some people who said, oh, my God, I'm so glad you shared this because I needed this. And so y'all should have the video now, go ahead and pull it up. You said, fitness is peace. Fitness is, first of all, it says, fitness is not just fitness, it's personal growth, transformation, accountability, mental health, confidence, strength, therapy. Peace is more than just fitness. And again, people were like, yo, I never thought about it that way.
So here's the thing. I'm telling you, once you, like, with fitness, we, a lot of us think of it as a chore, right? It's like, oh, I got to go work out, oh, I got to exercise, I have to do this, I have to do that, right? But once you start exercising, and it doesn't have to be all of these crazy workouts you see on social media, right? Once you start exercising, whether it's tennis, pickleball, running, walking, dancing around the house, whatever it is, you will see how it adds to other areas of your life. It allows you, first of all, it's personal, right? So you kind of have to, like, quiet your mind if you really are going to exercise. And then, I mean, it taps into everything. You can work on, like, your mindset as far as focus, it adds to your sexual life, it adds to your personal life.
Oh, you have some folks, their ears just picked up.
Sleep better, helps with depression, all of these different things, and it becomes something, it's a way of life. It's something that you look forward to because it's maintenance, right? And I know we hear this term, self-care and self-love, and it's thrown about loosely, but it's like, it's a real thing. And I think if we switch it from a chore to it's a way for us to add to our lives, it's a way for us to connect with ourselves, and it's a way, honestly, yes, you do see the physical benefits of it, right? That's the icing on the cake. But when I exercise, it's like a chance for me to take a deep breath, right? And to get away from life and to really get in tune with myself and do something for myself. And then, yes, I do know that I'm actually adding to my life, and I'm fighting off heart disease and depression and all of these things, but it's just a feel-good thing that we need to do for ourselves, right? And we just have to switch our focus. Do not think of working out as a chore. It is a way of life, it's something, I mean, you're adding to your life. Everything that comes from exercise adds. You're going to get gains in all areas of your life by exercising, so why wouldn't you do it? Okay, that video? And it's fun. You got to have fun, you know? You have to make it fun.
I said, I started laughing because when you said, when you said it will improve your sex life, I said, oh, the folks in the YouTube chat were like, hey, now I'm paying attention. You actually went through this. You didn't always look like the way you look now. When you had a lot of turmoil going on in your life, you said, working out and making those changes, shedding that stuff, saved you.
Yes. Yes. It literally, like, Roland, I'm telling you, it was, you know, we know how life goes, right? There's so many things that happen in life that we have absolutely no control over. And at this moment in my life, one of the things I had control over was my health, was my fitness. So I started working out as a way for me to express, like, get my emotions out and a way to have quiet time and just a way to let my frustrations out. And it definitely saved my life. It was the only thing that I knew to do that would help me push through, right? And so now, if I don't work out, like, I am telling you, if I go more than a couple of days without working out, I'm like, huh, because I naturally, you know, I do have three kids, and then I am a coach, right? So I'm naturally constantly pouring out to others, right? And nurturing them. So exercise for me is a way for me to pour back into myself, and along with other things. But it's honestly, it's what saved my life, and I could never imagine not being able to exercise, right? And that's one of the reasons why I take rest days, when I need to take a rest day, I listen to my body, I'm a little hard-headed, but I listen to my body because it's something that I want to continue to do. And no, it literally saved my life, the depression, the anxiety, everything I was going through, and I just kind of like threw myself into like a positive outlet, which became, you know, working out. And I'm not, like, I don't, it's not a fad, I don't go like so intense with it, you know, I balance it out, but it's, I mean, it's how I take care of myself. There's only one you, you know what I'm saying? We get one body, and you have to take care of it.
So I was looking for it because you had one of your stories, I guess it was Saturday, you call it "me time." When you say, working out, you said "me time." Why?
It's, I'm telling you, it is personal. When you push your body, when you pour into your cup, when you love on yourself, you know, through fitness and your exercise and everything like that, it's so personal. I block out everything, right? So this weekend, you guys, I posted on my story what he's talking about, both my boys play soccer, one of them had a tournament, so he had like a couple of games this weekend. And so I'm running back and forth to the soccer field. He has to be there 40, you know, 40 minutes before the game. I have his brother and sister with me, you know, I got the coolers, I got the chairs, I'm like on soccer mom duty. And I knew this weekend was, you know, for soccer, like, running back and forth all over the place. But in order for me to show up this weekend and be the best soccer mom I could be, I had to do something for myself. So Sunday morning before finals or whatever, I went to the gym, I'm like, okay, I can get in like a 45-minute workout, I don't have to take care of anybody, I'm not packing the car up, I'm not like wearing your uniform screaming, you know, I'm not taking calls from clients. This is Avery time. This is something that's going to make me feel good. Yes, I may be tired right now, and I may be sluggish. I would have rather laid in bed, guys, right? I would have rather laid in bed, but I'm like, okay, is laying in bed right now, probably scrolling on my phone, is that going to help my mood the rest of the day? Is that going to make me feel good? Am I going to feel like I did something for myself? Does scrolling on my phone add to my life? In that moment, absolutely not, it didn't. What does working out do for me, right? It's personal, it's me time, it's going to make me feel better later, I'm going to be in a better mood, I'll be able to sleep better, it's laying out some of those, you know, endorphins and all this stuff. I'm like, okay, this is going to add to my life. Girl, get up, go to the gym, and then, I mean, I was able to rock it out the rest of the day. It was for me, it's personal, it's like nobody else, like, this is for Avery.
All right, folks, if you got some questions, give us a call. Put the number up, please. Call right now at 202. Y'all, come on, y'all slow. Let's go. Come on, move. Okay, thank you. 202-890-1199, 202-890-1199. Who's the first caller? Who you got? All right, Vanessa Thomas. Vanessa, what's your question for Avery Woodley? Vanessa, do we have a question?
I found the same thing, that where I had this, I thought, mysterious illness, when I created a program for myself and began to work it, that illness just didn't exist. My question is, does it make a difference, like, usually in the morning, I create a fruit juice and drink some water before I work out? Is there the optimum of how we should eat before, like, let's say, walking, pickleball, and, you know, doing some exercise in the park? Is there, you know, something better to eat than others?
That's interesting because I know I've had different folks say, okay, you should have something to eat before you work out. you should have something to eat before you work out. Others say, no, you should have nothing on your stomach, you should work out. You should do a protein shake and it's all kind of different advice. All right, Avery, what say you?
Okay. So just listen to me squash everybody else. No, everybody has their way, right? And for sure, there are some workouts that I do on a empty stomach, right? So that means if I know I'm not going to burn, not necessarily burn a ton of calories, but I'm not jumping around and doing anything crazy, say I'm just going for a walk, right? I may have like some hot lemon water or water or even a coffee and I go on a walk and that's like my fasted cardio, which means there's technically nothing else added to my stomach. Depending, and it also depends on the time of day, right? Are you working out super early? If you're not working out until two o'clock, I don't want you to like not eat up until two o'clock, right? Because your body, you're already up, moving around, maybe working, running errands. And so your body is already spending out fuel, right? You're burning fuel. You want to have energy to get through your workout. So this is the thing I tell people. It really depends on you. It depends on the time of day. It depends on the workout. If you're about to do a strength workout, any weightlifting or anything that's gonna take more from you, then I would suggest not to do that on an empty stomach because you don't want to get light-headed, you don't want to get dizzy, you don't want to do any of those things. It's like you want to put some fuel in so you can actually get through the workout and get the maximum benefits from it. So if you're gonna do any type of strength training or bootcamp or anything like that, you may want to eat, I would say, even an hour before. And if you don't want to eat anything heavy, an apple, and it sounds crazy, but it's low in sugar, it has carbs built into it. I used to keep apples in my bootcamp classes. So when I had clients rush in from work and they like, oh, I didn't eat anything. It's like, okay, eat this apple really quick. You could do that. You could do some source of protein, of meat or anything like that. I really don't do too many protein shakes prior to my workout, only because I don't like that fluid, you know what I'm saying? Like that feeling sloshing around in my stomach. So I save my protein shake for afterwards or whatever. So yeah, think of the time of day, think of the type of workout you're doing, right? So if you know you're just gonna walk or you're gonna do maybe even a yoga or ride a bike, you may be able to do it with, you know, hardly anything on your stomach. As far as like fasted or like Roland said, you know, don't eat anything. But if you're gonna do anything that's gonna require, require more strength, or if it's later in the day, or if you're sluggish, go ahead and eat something, you know, that's gonna give you like a little boost of energy. Go ahead and eat something so you can have the chance to actually get through your workout without injury, right? You don't want to break form because you're tired and you're like swinging weights all like this, okay? So you want to be at your peak and be at your best when you're actually working out. I hope that helped you a little bit.
Number to call is 202-890-1199, 202-890-1199. Before I go to Cheryl, let me go ahead and address somebody right now. See, I told y'all, be very careful when you are sitting here commenting. First of all, y'all on YouTube, y'all should be hitting the like button right now. Y'all should be hitting that. So somebody named Trina, Trina Hodges, she goes, Roland, please stop showing the twerking. It's not cute. We are sexualized enough. Trina, let me explain something to you. It's five women in my control room. I ain't picked the videos. Now, Trina, you clearly were not paying attention to what Avery had to say. What she said was make working out fun. If you want to twerk, if you want to dance, I was two-stepping earlier, do that. The whole point of this, Trina, see, Trina, you're the one sexualizing this because you're the one who brought it up. She said, have fun. Stop making working out laborious. And so if you want to feel like twerking or folks from the Caribbean call it whining, okay? That ain't sexualizing. It's called dancing, which black people do. Go ahead.
No, it's a total, you know what? That's a total workout, right? And I said, make working out fun. So whether you want to get up and jump up and down, twerk or whatever, and I wish I could really twerk because when I listen to, you know, my Caribbean music and my Afro beats when I'm working out, I'm like moving my hips and everything between my exercises and my core and everything is sore. Matter of fact, I was in the gym the other day. Here was an older gentleman, I don't know how old he was, and he had his headphones in and I looked over and he was like jamming, like in between his dead lips, right? This is, you know, in between his dead lips, he was jamming and getting it. And then he gave me a thumbs up and I was like, you know what? Yeah, like I'm like, you know, I'm gonna do my little dance between mine. But it felt good to see somebody that was in there having fun, working out, having fun saving their life, having fun beating off depression, heart disease, high blood pressure, cholesterol, whatever it is, but just really enjoying, you know, working out, the exercise. So if you want to twerk, if you want to do whatever you want to do, but twerking is a real workout. And I'm sure the ladies that teach these twerk classes would feel differently by you saying that it was, you know, it's sexualized. That's not sexual at all. It was like 100 degrees outside, girl. I was dancing, honey. I was happy. I was doing that workout.
Look, I was working out today, Mark Morrissey was jamming and y'all. So Jamelle Hill and Bari Williams hate Return of the Mack. And so I was sitting here working out and I was like, I said, hold up. The song hit, I started dancing. In fact, Jim Jones is watching. Jim used to hate it. We used to work out and Jim would be like, Roland, how the hell are you tired? But then when a song come on, you just find a burst of energy. I used to say, bruh, that's what dancing does. I said, I'll find a burst of energy and I'll start dancing. It don't matter. And so, and here's a video. I was sitting here spinning, I was dancing, I was grooving. So it just, it just trips me out when people sit here and just be whining and complaining. I mean, pay attention to what the hell we talking about versus sitting here tripping. Trina Hodges. All right, Cheryl's on the phone line. Cheryl, what's your question for Avery Woodley?
Hi, how's everybody?
Great.
Hi.
Great. I was calling in regard to intermittent fasting. Wanted to know what are your thoughts on that? Is that a great thing or how do you feel about that, please?
Okay, so I'm gonna give you my honest opinion. I'm, and Roland may know how I feel about certain things, so I am a little, I'm not gonna say old school with certain stuff, but I am, right? I, I like for my clients and I try not to shun other people's ideas and everything like that. I keep it as simple as possible, right? Because there's so many things like do intermittent fasting? No, you know, don't drink before this time, don't eat before this time. I have had, I have had clients that have tried intermittent fasting that they were doing on their own before they came to me, right? And I stopped them from it. And they saw results because they hit a plateau, which you can hit a plateau doing anything, right? But my whole idea is, how do I put it? If you can't do it for a year, if you can't do it for two years, if you can't do it for three years, basically if you can't make it a way of life and do it all the time, don't do it. And that's just what I, that's what I believe when it comes to fitness because every time you look up, somebody's gonna have a different method, right? We had the Atkins, we had all these different things and a lot of times people will jump on these trends and these bandwagons and you follow it, but it doesn't fit your way of life. Or you do it for a little bit and as soon as somebody has a birthday or something else or it's an event and you have to eat at a different time, it completely throws you off and then you find yourself starting back all over again. What I will say is, if you want to do, some people, I know some people that do intermittent fasting or they do keto or they do vegan days, right? So you can still trick your body and metabolism. So you may have a day that you do intermittent fasting or a day that you're all vegan or a day that you are, you know, high protein, high healthy fats, low carbs. I say that you should kind of mix it up like that and then it'll, your body will just keep going up and down because your body's like, wait, what is going on? You know what I'm saying? Your metabolism. But if it's not, if it can't be a way of life, then don't do it.
All right then, we appreciate it. First of all, YouTube, you should easily be at a thousand likes. I don't know what's taking y'all so long. Hit the doggone like button. Just hit the doggone button, it ain't that hard. All right, so Avery, you have a theme when it comes to the scale and it's interesting because Terry Starks, who goes by the Diet Doctor on Instagram, we've had Terry on the show as well. Terry hates the scale. He tells folks who do his diet plans, who do his food plans, he said, don't get on the scale. Measure how you look, how your clothes fit. A lot of people, they, every month, jump up, oh dang, I'm down point four or ooh, I'm up point three. And it then just becomes this, oh, it's been four days and then I don't see any change when really how your clothes fit tells you very quickly. And we all know, wait a minute, hold up, these pants a little tight, then whoa, these pants a little loose. That just really determines what's happening with your body.
Yes. I hate, like, you know, I hate the scale. And it's funny because if any of my clients watches, they're like, ooh, Avery, I know how you feel about the scale. Whenever they hit me up, they're like, okay, girl, so I got on the scale at work and I know how you feel because I literally hate the scale. Now, when I train people, I may have them get on it initially, right? Just an initial intake. We're gonna, you know, get on the scale once, we're gonna take your measurements. And then if I ever weigh them throughout that, I'm like, first of all, get rid of every scale that you have. When I have them get on the scale sometimes, it's, I would have them get on backwards. So when I used to do these challenges, like weight loss challenges or fitness challenges, I would have them, they could see their initial weight and then I would have them get on the scale backwards and I would take their measurements and, you know, take their weight and I wouldn't let them see it because it will screw with your mind, right? And especially women, the way we swell and water and our hormones, you could be one way one second and turn around five minutes later and do another way, you know, and be another way. And so you, I am big on measurements, not only how your clothes feel, but since I like to say I'm a personal coach, right? My body, so how do you feel? How do your clothes feel? How do you feel, right? Is it easier for you now to get up off the floor if you have little kids and you're playing with them? Is it easier for you to walk up a flight of stairs? Does your knees not hurt as much? You know what I'm saying? Like how do you actually feel getting in and out of the car in any everyday movement? Is there less huffing and puffing? Measure up your workouts, right? Say your initial workout, when you first started working out, 20 minutes in or even five minutes into the warm-up, you're like, huh, huh, right? But now you realize, yeah, I'm still tired during my workout, you know, absolutely. But now I don't feel like I'm about to throw up and pass out at the five-minute mark. Now I feel like I'm about to throw up and pass out at the 20-minute mark, right? A scale cannot measure any of that. A scale cannot measure a changed mindset. A scale cannot measure confidence. A scale cannot measure your blood pressure, your heart health, you know, if your knees are hurting or anything like that. A scale is just a number. Pay attention to everything else because I feel, you know, the scale will trick you and working out and adapting a healthier way of life, right? Nothing extreme, but just a healthier way of life for you is hard enough, especially if you've spent years living one way and now you're trying to transform and really have a lifestyle change. You have to protect that lifestyle change. You have to watch what you, you know, not only what you eat and what you drink, what you listen to, right? What you hear. The scale is one of those things that you have to watch because it will seep into your mind and it could completely throw you off.
It'll drive you crazy.
Feel like you've been working, 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 watching what you eat, you got accountability part, you're doing all of these things and it hasn't budged.
Yep, it'll drive you crazy. All right, folks, I'm gonna go and take this segment for nine more minutes. So y'all have to get your questions in right now. 202-890-1199. Antonio Lewis, what's your question for Avery Woodley? Antonio?
Yes, yes, yes.
What's your question? You said you're a boxer? Antonio, you there? All right. Antonio, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, now can we hear you? Go ahead. Yes, okay. Antonio, listen to me. Don't listen to, no, don't listen to your phone. If you're watching, it's a delay. So listen to me. Go ahead with your question. Listen to me through your phone. Don't look at the feed. So go ahead and talk. What's your question? Antonio, don't watch the feed. You're on the phone talking to me. Talk to me. Forget whatever you're watching and listening to. What's your question? Okay, Antonio, I'm gonna come back to you. Y'all talk to Antonio. Okay, Antonio, what's your question?
I'm, I'm, I'm here, morning. Thank you for, for getting me, but I'm here, Roland Martin. I don't know what she's talking about. I'm here, Roland.
I know you're here. What's your question?
Sure, I'm just happy to be here.
Okay, I actually cannot understand. So y'all figure out what he's talking about. Okay, go to my next caller, Robert James. Robert James, you're on Roland Martin Unfiltered, talking to Avery Woodley. What's your question? Robert? Robert? Robert?
Robert!
Okay, okay. So let me explain, y'all. To all the callers, listen to me. When you call in, turn your TV down, turn your iPad down, your computer down. It's a delay. It's about 20-second delay. So when you're on the phone, listen to me talk to you. Don't listen to the feed because it's a 20-some second delay. All right, number to call is 202-890-1199, 202-890-1199. Doing this for six more minutes. So let's see if Robert's now there. Robert, are you there? No. Robert's not there. Who else we got on the line? Okay, all right. So Robert, Antonio, they're not understanding the whole delay thing. So we'll do, do found thoughts right here. All right. Earlier, we talked about a changing state of mind. Talk, Avery, talk about how you also should vary the workout so it doesn't become monotonous where you're doing the same thing. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
All right, so talk, we talked earlier about how we must change our mindset, but talk about though, how we also must change the workout so it's not the same thing over and over and over again and now becomes monotonous and it bores us out of our minds.
Yeah. So here's the thing, just like, I don't know if you guys have ever heard this, so when you use certain deodorants, it's gonna sound silly, right? Deodorant, shampoos and conditioners, you can actually like, you don't reach the same benefits, right? Like the deodorant might not work as good, the shampoo and conditioner, because your body actually gets used to it. And so it's not working, right? The same thing with exercising. One, not only does it get boring, but your body gets used to the same movements, all right? And you're not challenging and pushing your body as much. So you'll find yourself kind of hitting this, like I said earlier, like a plateau. So it's good to kind of trick your body into changing up and to hit different targets. And one, yes, obviously working out can get boring. I have been working out now for years, right? It gets boring sometimes. So then I may be like, you know what? Instead of walking outside, which I do a lot in the summer, I'm gonna walk, walk inside or I'm gonna, you know, not use many machines. I'm gonna do bodyweight exercises. I'm gonna do resistance bands. I'm gonna do, create all these different workouts using kettlebells or whatever. But changing it up adds some excitement. Sometimes you don't have to like join a gym, but you can create a challenge with your friends, your coworkers, people from your church, you know, the people in your house, your house, whether it's your husband or wife or your kids. And not only will you be adding accountability and a little bit of friendly competition, but it will also change it up and then you guys can get together and do partner workouts and everything. And then, like I said, you can add in some of your passions, right? Whether it's dancing, which we talked about, twerking, um, pickleball, tennis, swimming, anything like that. Add some of that stuff in as well and that will add to your exercise, fitness regimen and your overall health and wellness.
All right then, um, I think we got two more calls. They called in right at the last second, we got three more minutes in this segment. Uh, who's first up, y'all? Kenneth, Kenneth, uh, what's your question for Avery Woodley? You're on Roland Martin Unfiltered.
Thanks, brother. Uh, yeah, I want to say hi to your guests, I got the question. Um, so first question, how, how many days a week should you work out? And how much water should you really drink? I see people that carry these one gallon water jugs around and I know that if I tried to drink that much water, my workout is really gonna consist of going to the bathroom every five minutes as opposed to actually doing exercise.
Right.
All right.
So as far as exercise, I say at least three times a week. At least three times a week of an actual workout regimen, right? Or you're saying, okay, like I'm allotting this time, this forty-five minutes, this hour, this hour and a half for actual workout, I would say at least three times a week minimum, right? And then there may be other things that you have to consider because obviously the rest of the time, you're not just laying on the couch, right? You, you may be working, you wait, maybe working in the yard, you may be walking or whatever, you know? So count that in as movement, but I would say at minimum three times a week. Now, as far as the water, everybody is different. I'm not carrying no jug around, I would never drink it. That jug would probably last me a whole week. I have like, I'm gonna show you really quick, so I have a thing with water and I do drink a ton of water. But for some reason, if I have a bottle, like a bottle of water, if it has a regular cap, I won't drink it as much. So I have to trick myself, so I got, get bottles of water with the sport top, you know? So it's easier to drink, or if I'm at home and I'm drinking a glass of water, I'll put a straw in it. Um, I'm able to like drink it faster. But one thing I do is I'll get up in the morning and I say, okay, by the time I brush my teeth, I need to drink a glass of water, right? Okay, after I shower, brush my teeth or whatever, I need to drink another glass. Before I leave the house, you know, I'll drink another glass. So I actually, it may sound elementary, but I actually break it up like that and you'll get a lot of water in. So for example, if you want to watch Monday night football, right? And you haven't drunk hardly any water, just say, okay, before I sit down and turn the game on, I have to drink two glasses of water. So then by that time, you may have had eight cup, you know, like eight glasses of water a day or whatever people say, but like carrying something around like that, that, that's just not me, right? I'm like, like I say, if you can't do it for the rest of your life, if you can't do it like ninety percent of the time or eighty percent of the time, don't do it at all. So that's how I do mine, is I break it up throughout the day like that.
Uh, our buddy Dick Gregory, the late, great Dick Gregory, who often fasted, uh, who had his own diet powder. Uh, Dick, uh, actually said, every morning, start with an eight-ounce glass of water. He said, he said, the moment you wake up. Uh, and Dick would say, keep, keep that, that, that bottle of whatever right next to your bed and the moment you wake up, drink, go to the bathroom first, whatever you do. But he said, drink that eight-ounce bottle of water to flush your system the first thing you do in the morning.
Yes.
Uh, and so, uh, and it was so funny too, uh, because this probably was about six or nine months before Dick passed away. Uh, and, and he could tell that I'd been losing weight, been working out. And Dick said, I see, I see your body changing, why didn't you call me? He was like, you should have called me. Dick was always about vitamins and everything like that. And so that's who he was and so, uh, always a great guy. But that was one thing I would, stuck out. He said, eight-ounce glass of water, that's the first thing you do in the morning before you do anything else. Folks, uh, if you want to follow Avery, uh, pull up her stats, please. Uh, you can follow her on Instagram, uh, Avery underscore Woodley, uh, on Twitter as well. Uh, on TikTok, if I'm correct, it's A, it's A Woodley, I think it's A Woodley.
Yeah, you know, I really don't use TikTok that much, guys, so.
All right, but I'm just saying, but you're on there, but I think it's A Woodley, Facebook Avery Woodley. Uh, subscribe to her YouTube channel, folks, youtube.com/avorywoodley. Uh, we appreciate it, uh, thanks a bunch. And hopefully, uh, some folks have changed their mindset, uh, when it comes to working out and making it a lot more fun. And yes, if you want to twerk, if you want to do the two-step, uh, if you want to sit here and twirl, make your workout fun, there's nothing wrong, because guess what? When the music is playing and you're moved and, and you're dancing, that's called movement.
It's exercise, guys, it's exercise, however you get it, get it in.
Absolutely, all right, Avery, thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
All right, folks, uh, that is it for us on tomorrow's show. We will have part two of the fourth anniversary of the Environmental Justice Movement, uh, launching, of course, in North Carolina. Shout out North Carolina A and T, uh, when I was there in 2020, uh, this is one of the shirts that they actually had, you know, Aggies Activate the Vote. Uh, and so because Michael Regan here at the EPA, went to NC, uh, North Carolina A and T, decided to rock their shirt today, uh, and so, uh, certainly gotta rep them. Folks, that's it, uh, we'll see you tomorrow. Don't forget, we got Marketplace segment tomorrow, we feature black-owned businesses. Uh, hit that like button, let me see, where we end up on YouTube? Cause y'all was sitting here tripping, taking way too long, uh, hitting the like button. I should have had to be asking y'all to hit that doggone like button. Uh, let's see here, okay, we finally got over a thousand, should have happened a lot sooner. Folks, y'all want to support us in what we do, download the Black Star Network app, available on all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. Uh, and of course, you can also, uh, support us, your dollars make it possible for us to do what we do. Uh, again, we went to, we went to Warren County, North Carolina, uh, on, uh, Saturday, livestreamed that event, we're the only national outlet there, the only black-owned media outlet there, national as well. So hey, this is the real deal, y'all. Uh, and it costs money for the crew, costs money to travel, to rent the vehicle. Uh, and so trust me, your dollars make it possible for us to do what we do. Check-in money orders, go to P O Box five seven one nine six, Washington DC, two zero zero three seven dash zero one nine six. Cash app is Dollar Sign RM Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland at Roland S Martin dot com, Roland at Roland Martin Unfiltered dot com. Folks, that's it, I will see y'all tomorrow. Y'all know how we always close the show out.